All right, good evening and welcome to this candidate forum hosted by the Johnson County Post featuring candidates vying for three seats on the Westwood City Council. We'll give the candidates a chance to introduce themselves shortly, but first, my name's Kyle Palmer. I'm the editor of the Johnson County Post and honored to be the moderator for this forum. And the 11 nights of forums that will follow this over the course of the next month and a half, we're doing forums in cities and school boards across Johnson County. So we consider events like this our bread and butter. We have hosted such forums nearly every year since our founding as the Prairie Village Post nearly 15 years ago. They allow our readers and the residents of Johnson County a chance to hear directly from the people who would govern your communities so that you can make the decision about who best represents your interests and priorities. If you are a subscriber to the Post, either in the audience or watching online, I want to thank you. It's your support that helps us put on events like this. We would not be able to do our annual election coverage without the support of our nearly 8,000 paying subscribers. Got a thumbs up out there, that's good. If you do not currently subscribe, check us out. If this is your first time encountering us, either in person or online, please go to JohnsonCountyPost.com. You can sign up for a free trial offer for just $1 for the first month, and you can see what we're all about. A big thanks to the Shawnee Mission School District for allowing us the use of this space in the library at Westwood View Elementary for this event tonight. We're also live streaming this event to the Post Facebook page. We'll also put it up on our YouTube channel. So if you're not able to watch this entire thing, or you're watching this retroactively, you can watch it at any point between now and the election on November 4th. I also want to thank the six candidates, all six showed up tonight. Running for office is time-consuming and labor-intensive. You're seeking a position that will directly impact our readers in Westwood, and we appreciate you giving some of your time to help the voters understand your positions on the issues that matter to them. So let's briefly lay out the format for this forum. This is a forum featuring candidates vying for three at-large seats on the Westwood City Council, so all council seats in Westwood are at-large. There are six candidates here, so the top three vote-getters in November will win the seats on the council. For tonight's forum, each candidate will be given one minute to make a brief opening statement and introduce themselves to the audience. Following that, we'll ask a series of questions based in part on reader input. Each candidate will be given a chance to respond to those questions. You'll get the same amount of time, though that time may vary from question to question, and I'll make it clear, sometimes it might be 60 seconds, sometimes it might be 90 seconds. You'll all get the same amount of time to respond. I have some prepared questions based on some emails we got from readers, and then if you're in the audience and you want to ask a question, you should have had an index card on your seat. You can write down your question. You can give those to Leah Wonkam, who will be circulating around the room, and she will pass those up to me, and we'll try to ask some of the questions that you have in the audience as well. If a candidate mentions another candidate up here, or it's clear who they're talking about, we may give that other candidate a chance to respond for up to 30 seconds. Of course, there's six of you, and we have a lot of issues to get through, so we don't extend it back-and-forst between two individuals, but we might give that candidate who was mentioned a chance to respond. So with that, we're ready to get going, and we drew Scrabble tiles to figure out who's going to go first for opening statements. It's a very time-honored scientific process we use. And Jeff Harris is the one that got the A, and so you will go first. We'll go down the row left to right as the audience sees, and then go back to the front, so you'll all get a chance to introduce yourselves for 60 seconds, and we'll start with Jeff Harris.
Kyle, thank you, Johnson County Post, for being here, for hosting us. Thank you especially to your reporter Juliana. We have the privilege of having a local reporter in council very frequently. That's kind of rare these days, so thank you for your journalistic service. My name's Jeff Harris. By coincidence, I'm going first. I'm the only person not running for election but for reelection. I'm the one incumbent up here. I've lived in Westwood for over 13 years. My professional background is financial technology and kind of general consulting. I think it's important to let you know why I got started. I've told this story before, but about 10 years ago, my neighbor Rosemary, who was 86 years old at the time, looked at me and said, "You need to get more involved. You seem like a pretty smart person," and she was right. I have become a firm believer that if you are lucky enough to be happy and healthy, have a good place to live, have a good job, you owe something back, and this is one of the ways that I have been giving back for over 10 years. It's been a privilege and a pleasure to be on council, and I look forward to talking to you more tonight. Thank you.
And we'll stay at the same table, go down the line, and shift the microphone a little bit. Greg Hurliman, give you a chance to introduce yourself.
Good evening.
I'm Greg Hurliman, and I practiced last night, so I'm going to read, because I won't make it within a minute. So I'm Greg Hurliman, and I'm excited to run for the City Council of Westwood. My wife and I have lived in Westwood for over 10 years. My wife is back here in the back. We have a strong family connection with three of our four children and 13 of our 18 grandchildren calling Westwood home. As you can imagine, I'm deeply invested in the future of this community, and two of my kids are back here. Joe, my number two, and Molly, my number three, is back there. I graduated from K-State with an accounting degree. My career path has created significant experience in accounting, finance, and business management. That includes involvement in several industries, including real estate development and management, construction, and the hospitality industry. From this journey, I have developed a diverse skill set and have been part of nurturing strong company cultures. For Westwood, I'm committed to fiscal responsibility, transparency, and listening to the concerns of our residents to make well-informed decisions that benefit our community.
And thank you for that opening statement. We'll move to the next table. If you want to scoot that microphone just a little bit closer and give James Spies a chance to introduce himself.
Good evening. My name is James Spies, and I want to start by thanking each and every one of you for being here tonight. Your presence here tonight is a testament to your devotion to this community. Without engaged citizens like you, Westwood just simply wouldn't be the city and the community that it is. So again, I thank you so much for being here. I have spent the last 30 years practicing law, and as an attorney, I have been an advocate. First, I was an advocate for the state as an assistant district attorney, and now I'm an advocate for my clients in my private law practice. I want to take my advocacy skills and advocate on behalf of you. I want to advocate on behalf of my neighbors and my fellow residents of Westwood to bring what I believe is much-needed change to our city council. So whether it's something you hear from me tonight, or perhaps we'll have a chance to talk on your doorstep over the next two months, because I will be going from door to door, I hope that I can earn your vote to serve on your city council. It would truly be an honor. Thank you.
Continuing down the line, we'll give the microphone over to Jennifer Westlake. A chance for you to introduce yourself, Jennifer.
Thank you. Good evening, neighbors. Thank you for being here tonight. Your dedication to our city, your visions and your dreams for Westwood are the reasons why I am here. No one is more shocked than I am that I'm running for this position on city council. I was encouraged to stay out for two years and become the mayor, but in reality, the city doesn't have two years to be on the sidelines. When the opportunity came, I knew I had to step up. It is my civil duty and a calling. After all, serving others, communities, and families has always come naturally to me. Customer service with a smile is my absolute jam. I have called Westwood home since 2013 and was drawn here by the city's charm, character, welcoming neighbors, and the chance to live in a pocket of perfection so close to surrounding destinations. I remain committed to preserving the qualities that make Westwood such a special place to live. As an educator, I have dedicated my career to supporting students, families, and communities. Using data to drive decisions and drive instruction for improved outcomes is always in my wheelhouse, and I will bring the same approach to city council by using city data and input from residents to inform decisions, engage citizens, and deliver results that reflect the views, needs, and values of our community, because strong leadership starts with listening.
We'll go back to the other end of the table now and give the last two candidates a chance to introduce themselves, starting with Stephanie Becker on the left side.
Kyle, first, thanks for having us in Oregon.
Maybe just move the microphone just a little bit closer to yourself. No problem.
First, thanks for having us, and thanks for all of you guys for coming, and thanks for all of these candidates. There is no loss of love for Westwood in this room, obviously. And obviously, I have a shaky voice, so just know that I'm a little nervous. This is outside of my comfort zone, for sure. So I'm an 18-year resident of Westwood. My husband and I moved here shortly after getting married. We've raised our two boys here. Both of our boys have gone through Westwood View Elementary. One of my sons is now on to Indian Hills. My former background is in tax accounting. I did that for about 10 years before moving into more of a volunteer-type role in working as a treasurer for the school and working as a treasurer for the EEF. I really don't have any agenda here. I just want to pay it forward, as previous residents have done for me. They've protected this city, and they have developed it in a way that has made it incredible for my family to live here, and I want to do that for future generations.
And the final opening statement, we'll go to Spencer Day. Yeah, if you move the microphone just a little bit closer, and Spencer, give you a chance to introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Spencer Day. Thank you, everybody, for being here. I've probably called Westwood home for past 13 years. I grew up down in Redbridge, and now my wife and I are raising three boys here, 17, nine, and four. I'm an Eagle Scout, Ironman triathlete, and I volunteer coach for the Westwood View third-grade boys soccer team, Go Pythons. Like many couples, several years ago, my wife and I found ourselves outgrowing our small home, and we chose to renovate to be able to stay in Westwood because of the walkable streets, the fantastic, this fantastic new elementary school, and the family-friendly atmosphere. We're committed to staying here for the long haul. Many people asked me to run for city council because of my work with the Communities for All Ages Task Force, the Park Steering Committee, and my frequent attendance at city council meetings. I believe there's room for improvement. We have gaps in public communication. There are fixable issues with new construction and concern for aging tree canopy. I'll leave it at that.
Well, this next question will give you maybe a chance to expound, not only on you, but your candidacy, your priorities. It might also give us a sense of where you will fall on some of the issues that you probably suspect are going to be asked about. So the order will fall to Greg to begin this question. You'll all get 90 seconds to respond to this, a little bit longer than 60 seconds, a chance to maybe go a little bit longer. What, in your opinion, is the biggest issue or challenge facing Westwood over the next four years, and how would you tackle it if elected to the city council? 90 seconds. We'll start with Greg Hurliman.
Okay. From the research that I've done, I believe at the top of the list is the budget constraints that we have with regard to the community improvement projects. I hear that consistently. I have studied it some. I don't know all that needs to be understood, but that is a, that's a big deal, and creating revenue to allow for the, for those expenses to be, for those projects to be completed is very important. I think secondarily, safety is a big issue right now. I think there's a, there's a new thing going on with our kids and the cycles that are out there, and I, I don't know, I don't know what's possible, but I do know something needs to be, needs to be dealt with on that. That makes me a little nervous seeing, seeing what's going on, and I think those are the two biggest things that I see right now.
Microphone now to James Spies. The question is, what, in your opinion, is the biggest challenge or issue facing Westwood over the next four years, and how would you tackle it if elected?
I would say that I have three primary issues that are most important to me that I'm going to try to tackle on day one. The first is, and I'm sure this will come as no surprise to a lot of people in this room, that we need to make a decision about a bigger and a better park for Westwood. That has obviously become evident through all the issues that have arisen over the last year or two. My number-one priority is to take the existing park and to join that with the church lot to make one dedicated public park for Westwood. I want to use the resources of the Westwood Foundation to raise funds to improve that park, funds that are specifically earmarked for that park. We can have a modernized, beautiful park that every resident can enjoy. So that is my number-one priority. My second priority is bringing transparency to the city government. I think we only need to look back at the RFP issue that arose this past summer with the Westwood View Elementary project to see that there was very little transparency on that, in my opinion. I think it could have been a more open process where citizens could have at least seen what kind of proposals were made. I understand we won't necessarily get into the nitty-gritty of the financials, but it would have been very nice, considering the fact that there had been a survey that had been put out that said if Westwood View is going to be developed into residential, over 60% of the people who responded to that survey said they wanted single-family housing. That's not what is in plan right now. Number three, my big, next big issue is, much like Greg just said, we're definitely on the same page, public safety. We have kids out on scooters. We have people walking their dogs. I want to improve public safety in every way we can.
Jennifer Westlake, the question to you, biggest issue or challenge facing, almost said fairway, we did that last time, Westwood over the next four years. How do you plan to tackle that if elected to the council?
So it's much similar to everything that everyone is saying up here. I want to bring fiscally responsible, community-centered leadership. So what does that mean to me? I think we need to take a look at the budget. We need to see where we might be overspending, where we might have more opportunities to get more money coming in through new businesses and promoting new businesses, but also ways that are already there, that we are just now being able to see when I look over the budget. I have questions. So that, to me, is a change of mindset. It seems to be that we are gloom and doom, that we are, we don't have the funds to make things happen. We need to raise taxes. Taxes. We need to do that, but that's not always the only answer, and we've got to problem-solve in different ways and creative ways that will bring more problem-solving to this community. I also think that green space is a huge deal in Westwood. We have the ability to have a great park, and even today, on the Facebook posts, there were people saying that they wanted a new, they wanted more green space. They wanted a park. We need to do what the people want. So I would say that is the third best issue that I have, is to do exactly what the people want and support the community and represent the community. Thank you.
And going back down to the other end, Stephanie Becker, the biggest challenger issue you see facing Westwood over the next four years, and how you would tackle that if you're elected?
I think our biggest issue is probably that, well, I guess the Westwood will always, our core will always be residential, but the thing about Westwood is we're gridlocked by major roads, all of which are primarily development. I think development is always going to be a concern in Westwood, and it's always going to be evolving, and in conjunction with discussions about raising the mill levy. We need to also be looking at how we're going to use these development opportunities to bring tax into our city, to decrease the mill levy and things like that. And I think that those are discussions that we need to think about consciously and diligently, and how to use that development in a way that maintains the charm and character of our city and the residential pieces in the, at the core, while developing in a way that all of our residents have places that they can continue to walk to and use as amenities in our city.
Same question to Spencer Day at the same table. Biggest issue or challenge facing Westwood over the next four years. How would you tackle it if elected?
A good friend of mine once said that the most basic function of city government is to fix the dang streets, and we have some street issues that need to be addressed. We have a capital improvement plan that is underfunded. We need to figure out how to fund that in an ongoing manner so that we can address our streets that need work. We need, we also have a traffic speed issue that makes some of our streets, along with the aging streets, unsafe for kids to walk to school and bike to school, and I want to address that with traffic calming measures, but we've got to figure out how to pay for all of that.
And the last person to answer this question, back to Jeff Harris, the biggest issue-challenge you see facing Westwood over the next four years. How would you tackle it if on the council?
Fortunately, my answer is not about a near-term or 2025 issue. I think we're very fortunate that the city is fully staffed. The budget is balanced for 2025 and 2026. Our city operations are very strong right now because we are at full staff, and we do have funds in reserve. So I think the number-one issue is longer-term, and almost everyone has touched on this. It's to diversify and to continue to increase city revenue such that we can make progress on the capital improvement plan, which several people have mentioned. That plan, which is mostly street projects, street light projects, and some stormwater projects, has multimillion-dollar allocations over the coming, you know, five to 10 years, and we do not yet have revenue identified to meet all of those needs. So that's not just important because it's the plan. It's important because in the survey of residents in the past year, the top three priorities that residents said the city should focus on were, in this order, streets, trees, streetlights. So capital improvement plan encompasses the first and the third of those. The middle one, tree preservation, which was talked about in the previous forum, has really come to a lot of people's attention in the past couple of years, unfortunately. I've been thinking that most of the city was built via the late '40s and '50s, which was exactly 75 years ago, and all of the trees planted 75 years ago are now 75 years old. So I think we do face kind of a generational challenge around trees. The city already has in progress plans towards identifying trees and increasing planting in the city, and I will stop there.
Let's jump into some issues. We'll get 60 seconds to respond to this one. The order falls to James Spies to begin this one. Several of you, some of the questions that are going to be coming. So we're going to talk about the budget. We're going to talk about the property tax rate. We're going to talk about the park and some of the, and the CIP as well, all those issues that you all mentioned. Let's start with the budget. The city projects a looming deficit for its five-year capital improvement program. It's the long-range plan that charts out major infrastructure projects in the city, most notably upgrades the neighborhood streets, as a couple of you have mentioned. If nothing is done, the city says that by 2028, Westwood CIP would be in the red by more than $5 million. How do you suggest Westwood contend with this issue? In his recent message to residents, Mayor David Waters said that you could either delay or cancel capital projects. You could cut spending, or you could raise revenues. That is, raise taxes. So James Spies, how do you suggest Westwood contend with this issue? What approach would you advocate for if elected to the city council? We'll start with 60 seconds on this one.
I think this issue is really no different than a household. Every household in this city has probably a budget that they are operating under. You have income, and you have expenses, and sometimes the income doesn't meet the expenses, and that means that very difficult decisions have to be made. It's very easy, of course, to say, "Well, we'll raise property taxes." Well, that has a real impact on those households that are trying to meet their own budgets. So from a, as a threshold matter, we need to identify any areas where we can reduce spending. It may be a difficult choice we have to make, that we might have to delay some of these projects. And finally, only, I think, as a, as a last straw, do we look at raising property taxes, because while that might not hurt some of us in this room, there is some in this room who are living on fixed, in this community, I should say, who are living on fixed incomes, where an additional $100 or more a month in property taxes would be a real stretch for them, and so that would be the option of last resort on my, from my point of view.
Jennifer Westlake, this question to you, dealing with this, what the city projects as a looming deficit for its capital improvement program, potentially delaying projects, street repairs, cutting spending, raising revenues. How would you prioritize it? How would you contend with it if elected to the city council?
So like Jane just said, there are, it works just like a household, and anyone who knows this is the educator up here that is always on a budget. I have to have a side hustle to even make my budget happen. So I think that what we need to do is get creative in the way that we're going to bring in revenue, whether that's through new businesses, whether that's looking at our current budget and seeing areas that we can cut back. I noticed, even when I was looking through the budget, there is a line that says staff activities. It's gone up from, it's gone up to $12,000 this year, and it started at $2,000 in 2024. So it's just going up and up and up, and I'm wondering what that is. I don't know what that is yet, but it's just one area where expenses can be cut back. And so cutting back a little bit and then also bringing in new businesses.
Going down the other end of the table, Stephanie Becker, this question to you. How would you contend with this looming issue of dealing with a CIP program in the red? Would you want to cancel or delay some of these projects? Would you want to try to raise revenues or raise taxes in some way, diversify taxes, as someone else said, cut spending in some ways? How would you contend with this? How would you prioritize the issue if you're a city council member?
I hate to bring this up, but I feel like the city was provided with an opportunity to raise funds creatively and alleviate a lot of this issue that we're now facing, unfortunately. Or fortunately, depending on who you are. The city voted to effectively raise taxes to maintain services and current spend, or current-as-is. So I think as a city, we need to have that discussion about whether we are willing to cut services or delay infrastructure changes and potentially risk for future families and things like that, roads that are not repaired, and city buildings that need fixed, and so on. I think that's just a discussion we need to have, and I think it's a tough discussion, but...
And just, and just, so it's clear, the reference you're making, the vote last year for the Carbank project turned it down. You're suggesting that would have raised the revenue that maybe we're talking about, maybe to fill the hole, but now faced with the fact that, as you said, the voters did turn that down, what would the, what would the hierarchy or priorities be in terms of, like, cutting, delaying projects, raising taxes? How would you, how would you approach it?
I'd have to say delaying projects first. I think our city personnel are excellent in our city, and they provide incredible services to all of us, and I don't know that there's a single one of them that I would want to cut. So I think that we would have to delay projects.
Spencer Day, the question to you. How would you approach this issue? Again, kind of laying out at least some of the options that Mayor Waters laid out in his recent letter to the city. How would you contend with this issue? What would be your priorities if elected?
Sure. You know, over the years, in my attendance, sometimes solo attendance at multiple budget meetings, there is not a lot of room to cut. There's a few thousand dollars here, a few thousand dollars there that we could save, but the vast majority of our yearly budget goes to salaries. So if we really want to save some money by cutting, who do we fire? That's the hard truth. I also, it pains me to advocate for raising any taxes, because we do have citizens that live on fixed incomes and, you know, are limited incomes. But we need to address our infrastructure before it gets worse. 50th Street is going to cost more to fix four or five years down the road than it does today. So we have to have those hard conversations.
A question to Jeff Harris. How would you contend with this issue? Because you are currently on the councils. You've been contending with it. What would be your priorities going into the next four years if you're reelected?
This one is something I've already been actively talking about and working on for a number of years, and that's what I mentioned earlier, which is diversifying and increasing city revenues. One of the reasons, I will flat-out say it, I was in favor of the Carbank project because it did diversify revenue and increase revenue. One of the reasons I'm interested in the Huntway West project is because it further increases revenue and slightly diversifies. The housing stock is not all single families. It slightly diversifies, although I don't know if it's meaningful. One of the good things to come out of the last couple of years, this has been a lot of attention in Westwood, is that the city has received a number of kind of informal calls from developers, and so we have a lot of informal relationships, and so part of continuing to find opportunity will be to continue to convey that we are open for business and interested in talking. I'm not in favor of cutting any city services. If you attend the budget hearing tomorrow night, you will see a slide that shows years of activity by city administration to cut costs, including, not slightly, rethinking our insurance options year to year to cut those costs. What will likely happen is that we will postpone projects.
Greg Hurliman, I think you're the last one to answer this question, so I'll give it over to you. How would you contend with this issue, the looming CIP deficit, cutting delaying projects, cutting spending, raising taxes, revenues, diversifying revenues? How, what would be your priority? How would you approach it?
There's four parts to it. There's the capital improvements budget. There's the operating budget, and then there's, and then there's the revenue, I'm sorry, three. And then there's the revenue side of our budget, and Jeff spoke to it. I frankly, sitting here, I have done some work studying all of this, but I don't have access to the details that I need to have to actually, to actually make a decision of how I would do it. I do know that there are practical ways to improve our process and our ways of addressing this, and so I, it would be hard for me to sit here and say how I'm going to handle that without the information.
Well, maybe just like philosophically, where do you fall in the spectrum of, like, needing to cut as opposed to needing to raise taxes or revenue? Philosophically, where are you more empathetic towards?
I would, I am not for raising taxes much, but again, there's lots of pieces of that. I am not for kicking the can down the road on the construction projects either, but there's ways to look at those projects and things, and I just, I just don't know for sure.
Thank you for answering that follow-up question. We'll go to Jennifer now, is where the order falls, and there's kind of a secondary question to this that many of you have already kind of touched upon that works with the budget and the CIP, and that is property taxes. Due in large part to the projected CIP deficit, the city is considering a mill levy or property tax rate increase at tomorrow night's budget hearing, is when that final decision will be made. As far as I understand it, both a 2-mill and 4-mill increase have been put on the table to add to the city's current mill rate of 21.99. We'll say that rate has stayed relatively flat over the past 10 years, but the city is now looking at an increase. So kind of clear from your previous answers, but I'll ask it again and maybe give you a chance to expound more philosophically and where you stand on taxes. Do you support a property tax increase for this year? Why or why not? We'll start with Jennifer. 60 seconds.
So this is an area where I need to do more research, and that is just the truth. So I will be talking to residents, and I will be getting information from them to make a good decision on this answer. Thank you.
But you, I mean, the budget hearing's tomorrow night, so I mean, yeah, yeah, I mean, the budget process has been talked about for months now. You have a, have a choice in your own head about whether this is, whether this tax increase is needed, or whether you would want to do something different?
Yes, and I just said that I would want to create something different. I, I do not want to see an increase in property taxes. Thank you.
Stephanie Becker, the question to you. Do you support a property tax increase, which is being discussed for this year, I guess for 2026? Why or why not? And just move the microphone just closer to you, just so we can hear you for sure.
I do support it. I don't know what another answer is. The residents have said that they want to maintain services, and they want to maintain the current way of life in Westwood, and without first diversifying different revenue streams, there's not another way to do it currently. And maybe in the future, we can reduce that mill levy if we find ways to diversify revenue through development on the outskirts of our city, but right now, I think it's our only option.
Spencer Day, the question to you. Do you support a property tax increase for the 2026 budget? Why or why not?
I do unfortunately support the increase. It pains me to say that. If we are able to divers- If we are able to diversify our tax base a little bit more a few years down the road, maybe we could look at dropping it down. But we need to address some of our infrastructure 10 years ago. But we didn't address it 10 years ago, so we need to address it now. Like I just said, 50th Street needs a mill and overlay right now. Few more years, maybe it needs a complete bed replacement. That's way more expensive. So let's address it now.
Jeff Harris, a question to you. I think you're actually the only one up here who will be voting tomorrow night, so you can give us a little bit of a preview, maybe. How do you, how do you see this issue? Do you support a property tax increase? Why or why not?
Very specific yes-no question. The audience deserves a very specific yes-no answer. Yes, unfortunately, I do. And you're right, we will be talking about it at council tomorrow. Why? I actually think Greg said it well. We have already been kicking the can on some of these projects, and they only get more expensive, especially over the past five years, as supply chain disruptions, cost of labor materials is only going up. The longer we don't do these, the more expensive they will be. I'm also interested in making sure that Westwood does not become known for having poor infrastructure. I was talking to our director of public works, John Sullivan, a couple of weeks ago, and kind of getting a sense of what's the nature of some of these streets. Some of the streets have not been rebuilt in over 40 years, since the early 1980s. And even then, it was probably the first time it had been touched since it had been built in the late 40s or 1950s. So these are kind of generational projects we need to be thinking about and can no longer kind of kick the can on. I'll also say, as someone did a moment ago, one of the questions that we asked in the survey last year was kind of residents' tolerance for increasing taxes, and we got a surprising majority that said yes.
Well, we'll ask some more questions about that. But Greg Hurlman, a question to you. Do you support a property tax increase for 2026? Why or why not?
For, if I was sitting and voting tomorrow night, I would not vote for a four-mill increase. I have done enough research to understand. The revenue neutral base, which is adjusted for Westwood down this year, and also with the prevalent increase in valuations going on throughout, over the last, I don't know how many years, but it's going to continue, I don't think a four-mill levy increase is required.
James Spies, the last one to answer this question. Do you support a property tax increase? Why or why not?
So I do want to address something that Ms. Becker said earlier, and she said, I hate to bring it up. And of course, she was referring to Car Bank and how that would have been an alternative revenue stream. An alternative revenue stream that we would not have seen yet for years to come if that had actually occurred. I don't know if the city was hoping for that or planning for that and started spending more in anticipation of it. But I would say right now, I echo very much of what Greg said. If I were sitting on the council tomorrow, I would be voting for a no. As I indicated earlier, running the city is much like running a household. And I think the first step we need to take is figuring out where we can cut expenses. And as Jennifer said earlier, this staff expenditure, or staff projects, or staff whatever it was, going up from 2,000 to 12,000, we need to take a real hard look at where is Westwood spending its money? Where can it be cut? And only as an option of last resort do we raise property taxes.
Let's go on to the question that actually you kind of alluded to, and the order does fall to Stephanie, so in fact, might get a chance to respond to James within the answer of this question that I'm about to ask, because I will ask about the park. So obviously, one of the biggest topics in Westwood over the past year or two has been the future of Jody Dennis Park on the corner of Rainbow Boulevard and 50th Street. As was mentioned, voters last year rejected a plan to sell the park to make way for an office and retail development, the Car Bank project. That one, plan also did include an accompanying plan to turn the old Westwood View Elementary Site into a new park. Residents opposed to the sale of Dennis Park have continued fundraising to redevelop the park and the neighboring green space where the church used to be. Recent surveys, as some of you have said, have shown most residents want to prioritize parks in some way. So where do you stand on what should happen to Jody Dennis Park, the surrounding green space, the neighboring school property? More broadly, how should the city approach this issue now that voters rejected that project last year? This one's big. Let's do 90 seconds on this one. We'll push it to, if you could just move the microphone a little bit closer, Stephanie, you'll all get 90 seconds.
Oh, gosh, that's a big one. Okay, so the city went out to RFP, put out an RFP for the property. Hunt Midwest came back amongst other developers. Hunt missed what Midwest seemed to be the best of the options. There was not an option to develop the park in full by anybody. So I think that that is off the table. An eight-acre park is just not a reality that we can entertain anymore. That has passed. And given that, I think, given that the church and Jody Dennis are our last remaining green space in the city, I think we need to protect that. And I don't know exactly what that looks like now. I don't know if we need to look with creative, look at creative financing options through Hunt Midwest, maybe through a TIF, something like that, to provide us with revenue streams to develop the green space over time. But I guess my stance is that we need to protect the little space that we have left.
The question to Spencer Day.
So as it sits right now, you know, it's looking like Hunt Midwest will have the old school property unless something drastic happens tomorrow night, I believe. But, you know, everything takes money. There is maybe an opportunity to use the TIF district that was put in place with the Car Bank development to maybe divert some funds toward the existing Joe Dennis Park. I understand right now it needs $1.2 million worth of repairs just to make it as it sits. So we just have to have the discussion about what kind of money we want to spend on it and where that money comes from.
Jeff Harris, where do you stand on the future of Jody Dennis Park, the surrounding green space, the neighboring school property? And how should the city approach parks and green space now that the voters rejected that plan last year?
Thank you. I was going to ask you to repeat the question because I got a little lost, but I think I'm back. I want to start with the concept of an eight-acre park. I think I agree with someone who said that that's off the table. I want to be very clear, that was an extremely expensive option, not just the purchase, but the decades and decades of cost it would have added to the city.
And you're talking, just to be clear, you're talking about taking Jody Dennis Park, the neighboring green space, the school property, and making that entire property a park?
Correct. And I go out of my way and use time to say that because I think unfortunately, there are still people kind of having in their head that that idea is on the table, and I'm sorry to disabuse you, but it really, it really isn't. Where we stand today, I agree, the Hunt Midwest project is likely to go forward. So that, you know, property is probably settled, which means we are left, to the point of your question, with the existing Joe Dennis Park and the 50-50 Rainbow Property that is likely to be parkland in some form or fashion. But I'm saying likely, and I'm talking slowly, because I want to be cautious that we don't cut off options prematurely. I would like to see the Hunt Midwest project moving, being built, revenues being identified in detail and starting to flow before we necessarily cut off all options on any other properties. Does that mean I don't want them to be parkland? No, not at all. But I want to be a little cautious about how quickly we cut the city off from opportunity and flexibility. I think one of the reasons we're in this very situation is that the city, over 10 years ago, wisely talked with Johnny Mission School District and gave us the opportunity to be flexible with the school property to begin with.
The question now will go to Greg Hurlman. Also, Juliana fact-checking me in real time, texted me, the vote was in April, not last year. I think I might have said last year a couple of times. It was this year, just a few months ago. So just to make that clear. Same question, though, to Greg Hurlman. Where do you stand on what should happen or what could possibly happen with Jody Dennis Park and the neighboring properties? More broadly, what should the city's approach be to parks and green space?
This is a very practical accounting answer, accountant answer, I should say. I think all we've heard here tonight is that we have a lot of money to spend, and it's a matter of prioritizing how we're going to spend the funds that we do have. And to work the park in there to the tune of a million-two renovation, which is just a number that I have heard as well, I don't know anything about the basis of it. But to work that in is going to be, it's going to take some magic to get that and figure out how, how to prioritize how to use the funds that we do have. So that's, that's how I would, I would answer.
James Spies, the question to you. Where do you stand on what should happen at Jody Dennis Park, the neighboring properties? More broadly, the city's approach to parks and green space, which has, people have noted, is a priority for readers based on recent surveys.
You'll recall, I made this my number-one issue when I was asked the first question. So let's start with the park. What I would like to see happen, and it will be my commitment from day one, is to join the church lot with Jody Dennis Park officially and have it dedicated as a city park. That doesn't mean that it has to be immediately approved, improved upon. But I do want that property preserved. So that, and I heard Jeff Harris saying, I don't know exactly what he meant by this, he doesn't want to cut off all options. Well, frankly, I do. I do want to cut off options that that property could possibly be sold at some point in time. That would be done by dedicating it as a park, I submit. Secondly, I'm aware that there were people who approached the Westwood Foundation willing to donate money specifically for park renovation. They were turned away because the foundation, and this is my understanding, the foundation could not, or would not earmark it specifically for the park. I submit that that can be done, that the foundation can accept charitable donations, they can earmark it specifically for park improvement. And I submit that there are enough people in this community committed to that green space and to a bigger, better park that we can raise the funds through a significant amount of the funds, through private donations, so that we can have the kind of park that we envision, that is representative of the community that we live in. And so I submit that it can be done, and it is practical to make that happen outside of specifically city funds.
Now, we'll just give Jeff Harris a chance to respond, since you were named and suggested maybe he didn't quite know what you were talking about, so maybe give you a chance to explain what you were talking about when you said keeping all options open for, I think particularly the school property.
Let me try to explain my thinking a little bit more. So when I say keep options open, one of the things that hasn't come up yet tonight, but does come up routinely in surveys, is citizens are also interested in amenities, dining amenities, shopping amenities. And so we only have so much space to work with. The value of dining amenities, shopping amenities is also additional tax revenue. And so if there are city, the properties in the city that we might be able to influence or control or even think about, then lining up with that other interest is, I don't think we should move it off the table.
So let's move back to Jennifer Westlake now for your response to this question they've all been answering. Where do you stand on what should happen to Jody Dennis Park and its surrounding properties? And then more broadly, the city's approach to parks and green space?
Thank you. This is so near and dear to my heart. I live at 2309 West 51st Street, so it is right looking into that green space that we have now. I am able to see everything going on at Westwood View and the demolition that is going on right there right now. I ditto James on everything he just said. I truly believe, I don't know where the $1.2 million renovation came from, if that is from perhaps a consultant, or I just don't know why there would need to be that renovation amount of money on the park when people are just so happy going over there with their dogs and their balls and kicking around the balls. So I'm not, I don't know where that comes from. We don't need to have a park that is like Meadowbrook. We can ease into that and take it step by step. I am truly excited for the Hunt Midwest project to come here, and I think that they are, they're a company with integrity, that's going to do a good job with their housing. It's going to increase revenue to our city. And I do believe that there is an area in our city where we can create some space for restaurants and retail. I just, however, do not think it's right there where our park is. And I would combine the 50-50 Rainbow with Jody Dennis Park to create a bigger, larger park.
And just on the 1.2 million figure, I believe that's a suggestion about how much it would cost to renovate and upgrade Jody Dennis as it is now. I don't know if there's anyone else on the panel who might respond to that particular number, where that figure came from, or like what would be needed in order to, I guess, bring Jody Dennis Park up to current ADA standards and the like? I don't know if there's anyone else who might respond to that. Because I don't know if I can, Spencer, okay.
So those were some numbers I saw recently from a small study, I think the city did. And that wasn't doing much to the park. That was making the fountain functional, that was fixing the tennis court wall that is leaning and collapsing, and that was replacing the playset. That was it.
Finish up this issue about the park, and I just kind of want to go back down the line in the same order we just went, starting with Stephanie down the line. Because we did get a couple of questions about this via email, so it is clearly something that people care about, and maybe, for lack of a better term, voters are using as a litmus test in Westwood. So two groups of citizens did spring up amid the debate over Jody Dennis Park before April's vote. One, save the park, that group intent on kind of preserving Dennis Park as it is, opposed to the Car Bank project. And the other group, build our park, which supported selling Dennis Park in order to make way for the Car Bank project, but also to build, eventually build a new public park where the old Westwood View now is. So the question that a couple of readers asked is, does your campaign align itself with either of these groups or get financial support from them? I think we just want to know kind of where you fall, when that, before that vote was taking place, kind of which group, if any, you kind of fell in line with. And this could just be 30 seconds, just quickly down the line, start with Stephanie.
I am not aligned with any groups or receiving any money from any groups, but I was very much for the Car Bank project, and I was very heartbroken when it didn't pass. I thought it was going to give our city an opportunity to move its park more into the heart of the city and give our kids a place to play that was not the school. And I thought it was going to give us a lot of places that we could walk to, coffee shops that my husband and I could walk to, restaurants that we could eat after school, things like that. I was excited for it. I'm sad it didn't pass, but that's what the city chose to do.
Spencer Day, that same question to you. Again, save the park, build our park.
Sure. It's no secret that I helped with the Build Our Park Committee with a couple of other people in this room. That organization is now kind of defunct. There is no money that I've received from it. I, you know, that would be illegal to take money from a, that, for a campaign contribution. So no, I have not received money from Build Our Park.
And Jeff Harris, a question to you. Save the park, build our park. Of course, you've been a council member during that, that debate, so where did you fall along those lines? Or did you receive any financial support from any side in that one?
I played with either group. I didn't receive financial support, campaign support from either group. In fact, Kyle, I've received it from no one. I'm doing this out of my own pocket. I voted for the Car Bank project. I think it's pretty clear which side I was on.
Greg, the question to you again, kind of de facto, where you kind of fell in the Car Bank project is how this question has kind of played out. But also, the original one, save the park or build our park, did you align with any group? Did you get, are you getting funds from, from either?
I did not get any funds, nor do I expect to get any funds from anybody that supported either of those groups. I was incredibly neutral on, on the whole subject because I think there were a lot of, a lot of parts of it that, that I, I got involved a little bit late and tried to understand the details of it. But in the end, I voted that the, that the park, that the park should be kept as it is.
James Spies, the question to you.
Well, unfortunately, 30 seconds isn't just not long enough to answer this question as to why I was a no voter. I did vote no, do not sell Jody Dennis Park. I did not want to see the kind of development that Car Bank had in mind and the city had in mind, for, again, more reasons than I can even begin to explain in 30 seconds. It is my understanding that a group that supported the no vote and put out the signs for no vote was the Friends of Westwood Park. I think it was in fact even incorporated in Kansas, if I understand correctly. I have not received any funds from that, like legal organization. I have received campaign contributions from many of my neighbors, and whether they are officially affiliated with that park or not, that's their business.
And Jennifer Westlake, to round this question out, where did you fall on, on the Car Bank vote, as well as if you're receiving any support or align yourself with either save the park or build our park?
Because where I live and my proximity to that park, I was definitely save the park. And that is because I did not think that commercial property should go right in the middle of Westwood. I feel like commercial property should be on the outer edges of Westwood, where there is already other commercial and retail property. So I have received private funds from many neighbors. Some of them may have been save the park, and some of them may have been build our park. And some of them are not either, either or.
Mindful of time at 7:50, don't want to go much past 8 o'clock. So we have a couple more questions. It waterfalls to Spencer Day after going through a couple of rounds of questions about Jody Dennis Park. This is a separate issue. Also raised in email via a reader, with the World Cup coming to Kansas City, we'll see a big influx of tourism and people looking for temporary housing here in Johnson County. and people looking for temporary housing here in Johnson County. Should cities like Westwood consider lifting restrictions they put on short-term rentals such as Airbnbs? And I'll be frank, I don't quite know what the current rules are in Westwood, but would you be willing to look at potentially relaxing those ahead of next summer? If so, some residents may be concerned with how these rentals might impact their neighborhoods, even temporarily. On the other hand, some residents might welcome the chance to rent out their home for a month for some extra income. So where would you fall on how the city should approach this and prepare for the World Cup? And we'll start with Spencer Day, 60 seconds.
I am not sure how many Airbnbs are in Westwood right now. It may be in the single digits. And I'm frankly not up on the Airbnb regulations. I know that there are a number of ADUs that people have rented out, and those are a great option for the people that have built them. But I would have to examine, I have my feelings about Airbnbs.
Oh, what are they, please?
I worry that they take away small starter homes from people who need them, and they aren't as well cared for, and they can cause problems when not well managed. But again, I think the number of Airbnbs in the city is probably in the single digits.
Jeff Harris, this question to you, maybe specifically about Airbnbs, if there's any sort of relaxing of regulations the city could do, but just more broadly, how would the city prepare for the World Cup if they need to at all?
That I was not prepared to even think about. A couple years ago, we did receive a lot of feedback on the number of Airbnbs, kind of their upkeep, you know, noise complaints and things like that. The city did change some policies around requiring them to be registered and the amount of time people can spend in them. I'd have to check with our city administrator. I do think it's single digits. The idea of kind of relaxing all that, you know, for a couple of weeks in the World Cup, my gut says I'm not in favor of like chasing a couple dollars and causing kind of traffic and commotion and kind of a dust up in the city. I'm not quite convinced. I would want to think about it. I don't think we should be making decisions on this spur of the moment. I'm kind of leaning towards no. I think what the city does need to be prepared for is just people moving around us. There will be a lot of transportation, high reliance on public transportation. We have lines that go across 47th Street, down Rainbow Boulevard. So I think we should be prepared, probably mainly public safety, be prepared for kind of a lot of traffic going in and around the city.
And Greg Hurdman, the question to you. Where would you stand on the issue of Airbnbs in Westwood, if you think it's an issue at all, or any other ways in which the city should be prepared for the World Cup next summer?
Two questions?
Yeah, a two-point question there.
Okay. Airbnbs, I don't believe it's a great thing. I think, I don't know what we have on the books as far as a policy is concerned, but I would not be in favor of expanding that. And then relaxing it, I certainly would not be in favor of relaxing it for a short period of time. I think that's just asking for trouble.
Or goes down to James Spies. Again, the question about potentially taking advantage of Airbnbs during the World Cup, whether that's a good idea or not, and what your approach would be heading into the World Cup next summer.
Like most of my fellow candidates, I don't even know the specific rules on Airbnbs in Westwood. Maybe that's something I need to brush up on a little bit. I will say that if I was presented with that issue right now, I would be opposed or at least try to keep Airbnbs to a minimum to the best degree that we can. I would say with respect to the World Cup, I don't think it would really offend my sensibilities to have it loosened for a short period under that very unique circumstance. This is kind of a once in a generation type situation with the World Cup. I think it's probably the least of our concerns right now. We have a lot, far bigger issues that we can need to concern ourselves with in Westwood than Airbnbs for the World Cup.
And Jennifer Westlake, the question to you about preparing for the World Cup, if there's any opinion you have about Airbnbs, whether it be temporarily next summer or even into the future, where do you stand on that question?
I would be totally okay with putting it at ease for the World Cup and letting people do Airbnbs for their houses. I have just heard the amount of revenue that could happen in that short period of time, and I think that we should allow our citizens to be able to make that income.
And the final person to answer this question back on the other end of the table, Stephanie Becker. Again, preparing for next summer's World Cup, anything special the city should do, whether it be with Airbnbs particularly, or any other aspect of that you want to be prepared for as a city?
No, not particularly. I'm not inclined to-
Move the microphone just a little bit closer.
I'm not inclined to open that up. It feels like a slippery slope to me. Once you open it up for one event, what stops residents from asking you to open it up from another event? And then, once it keeps getting opened, you're just opening the window for more Airbnbs in the area. So I would be inclined to no.
Well, we are running close on time, so try to go through at least one more, maybe two more questions. But the order now falls to Jeff Harris, so we're kind of back where we began. A couple of you mentioned streets, traffic, safety. I know the city council has been talking about, I believe, scooters and bikes and young kids working on that. So the question to you about how to keep streets safe, if you see this as a big issue, as a couple of years have brought up index cards about that. So street safety, particularly around the issue of scooters and bikes, how do you see this issue and how should the city address it? 60 seconds.
Safety and traffic calming has been kind of an ongoing project. As we have done or started or thought about progressive street projects, we've applied the concept of complete streets. One of our council members, Laura Steele, works with BikeWalk KC, brings a lot of professional expertise about how to design streets that make them open to all sorts of transit, not just automobiles, and how to slow transit. So most of you are familiar with 47th Street. It shrank from four lanes to three with the middle being turns only, instituted bike lanes and landscaping on each side. I think it's been a huge improvement and a way to do all those things at once. Slow traffic, calm traffic, and make passage safer for pedestrians and bicyclists. The Mission Road project is kind of underway and will implement some, not all of those same features. There's a lot of, there's been a lot of talk over the past year or so about Rainbow Boulevard and how to apply the same types of concepts to, again, do all those things at once. To try to say real quickly, yeah, the issue, I'm really glad it came up in earlier, the issue of scooter safety is kind of very new and needs to be thought about.
Greg Hurdman, a question about street safety, traffic safety, but also kind of more particularly, since the council's been debating it, the scooters and bikes that kids ride on. What should be the city council's approach? What should be the priorities when talking about safety on Westwood roadways?
My concern is mostly internal, not the outside roads. It's the kids flying up and down the side streets on those scooters. I, again, unfortunately, I don't, I don't know what the answer is. I haven't seen a good example of how you can, but I do know that there, this has to be a priority in Westwood. And I'm in favor also of speed controlling bumps in the, in the roadways internally because we live on 51st Street and the cars fly down that street over that hill, and it is really dangerous. We have 25 little kids on that street, and we've got to do something to slow the cars down.
The order goes to James Spies. Traffic safety, roadway safety, again, the particular issue about kids on scooters and bikes, but maybe address the question more broadly. How should the city council approach it?
I'm really glad this question came up because it, again, is one of the issues that I feel very strongly about. So I live on the corner of Belinder Court and 48th Terrace. And 48th Terrace is a straight cut through between Belinder and Rainbow. And much like 51st that Greg just mentioned a moment ago, cars just fly down that road with little regard whatsoever for the kids that are on their bikes and scooters, for the people who are out walking their dogs. And I see it every day because my kitchen window faces right out onto 48th Terrace. Now, picture if you will for a moment, if you're heading down south on Belinder and you cross over Shawnee Mission Parkway, now you're in Fairway heading down that long hill of Belinder. And there are about half a dozen speed bumps. And I know it because I ride my bicycle down there three times a week. I do not see why we cannot add speed bumps like that on a couple of the streets here in Westwood. And I don't think we need to do it with a study and consultants and more money going out the door to figure out how to solve these issues. Put some street speed bumps in some of the streets that really need them.
Jennifer Westlake, the issue of road safety, traffic safety, whether you want to address, you know, e-scooters and bikes, but how should the city council approach this? What would be your priority?
Some of this has to do with education and educating our citizens on what's really happening. Because more than ever, I see kids flying down the streets, but they're not wearing helmets, they don't have reflectors. I see pedestrians and people that are jogging without their reflectors on. So part of that comes from the home. But also, I would be in total agreeance with doing the speed bumps. I think people fly through our neighborhoods so fast, and that might deter them from going so fast, and it would help increase the safety.
Back to the other end of the table, Stephanie Becker. How to make Westwood roads safe? What would be your priorities as a city council member?
I think the scooter conversation is interesting right now. And I think it's a situation where the minority has kind of ruined it for the majority. Do I need this closer? I think it's a situation where the minority has kind of ruined it for the majority. A lot of kids are very responsible on them. Full transparency, my kids have scooters. They know to get off of them when they're going around pedestrians and get off of them when they're crossing streets and so forth. But a lot of kids don't, and it's unsafe. And I think Fairway actually just proposed some new rules regarding scooters and requiring a license to be able to operate them or a parent guardian with them at all times. I think that there are rules that we can look to in Westwood about how to make it safe in our city, and that's a discussion we need to have.
And rounding out this conversation, Spencer Day, the question about traffic safety, road safety, potentially want to address scooters and bikes, but what would be your priorities if you were elected?
Sure. I'm a runner and a cyclist. I'm out on these streets all the time. My third grader rides his bike to school every day, there and back. And some of his friends do have, you know, e-bikes, e-scooters that they ride to school and back. And frankly, the speeds that they can attain are quite scary to me. I personally have been hit by a car twice on my bicycle. We have a speed problem, and we can fix that. I know that the city right now, currently, is going through a study of what we can do for traffic calming measures that is with the state of Kansas Highway Department, I believe. I might be wrong on that. But I would like to see that proposal when it's finished and how we implement some of those proposals from mid-block, you know, narrowing down or narrowing down at Mission Road or on Rainbow, speed tables, that kind of thing. I want to implement that.
So let's take this as sort of a closing statement. I'd said in the previous forum that kind of moving away from closing statements, but we did have a resident, not necessarily of Westwood, but emailed us today with a question that I thought was interesting. So let's round it out with all of you answering this question. We'll start, the order starts with Greg Hurdman. What is one thing about you that distinguishes you from your other candidates running for this race? What would make you best suited for this office? So what distinguishes you? So talk about yourself and what would make you best suited for this office. And we'll start with Greg Hurdman, 60 seconds for all of you kind of rounding this out.
I have-
Just move the microphone just a little bit closer. Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah.
I have a lot of experience in a lot of disciplines that are really critical to all the discussions we're having. I've spent years in the construction world. I have worked in real estate development, and I have worked with, in the hospitality industry. The question of raising revenue in, for Westwood is probably the most important thing that there is. And those are the disciplines that will help analyzing what is available for creative opportunities to increase the revenue for Westwood. And that's what I'm critically interested in doing for the people of Westwood.
James Spies, what distinguishes you from the other five people up here? What makes you the best candidate for the city council?
I hate to answer a question like this. And it seems so like, gosh, patting myself on the back. I had a friend once say to me, and this isn't, you know, not a joke, he said, "You're one of the most gifted communicators I've ever met." And I was very flattered. And what I think he meant was, I have a unique ability to take a very complex issue and break it down and explain it in very simple terms in a way that people understand. I have to persuade juries, day in and day out, to my side of a story. So I have learned over the years to communicate in a way that I think is effective. And I think those communication skills are probably my best attribute coming into a position like this, to take these very complex issues that face our city and break it down in a way that the average person who doesn't know the inner workings of the city can understand, oh, now I get it. Now I understand what's going on with the park, or now I understand what's going on with the old Westwood View. I didn't get that. So that, I think, is my greatest strength that distinguishes me from my fellow candidates.
And-
Fantastic people, and I commend them for being up here, putting themselves out here like I am.
And Jennifer Westlake, the question to you, what distinguishes you? What makes you the best candidate for Westwood City Council?
I'm going to go with customer service. I have a history in my whole life of being service-oriented, and that is either through education, through my volunteer work, through all of the things that just make me want to serve the people. Like, I may not have all the answers, but I don't need to know all the answers. When I come to you, I'm listening to you, and I want to do what's best for Westwood, and I want to do what you as citizens and neighbors want.
Back to the other end of the table, Stephanie Becker. What distinguishes you? What makes you the best candidate for city council?
One. I am going to say it's my involvement in the community and the different aspects of Westwood that my life has touched. My kids have been at Westwood View. I have been highly involved at the school throughout all of those years. My family has dealt with many issues currently affecting Westwood. My family lived at Woodside Village for two years. I have been intimately close with development and seen how that has impacted and helped my family. We, full transparency, rebuilt our house. We lived in our house for 16 years and spent three years designing a house that we felt would fit in Westwood and rebuilding it due to foundational issues that we could not correct in our house. So I have to say, oh, in addition, I'm involved in several book clubs within the Westwood community, and I am involved in several other clubs in this area. I know so many people, and I love to touch-
Finish the thought, please. Yeah, finish the thought.
But that's why, I guess.
Spencer Day, what distinguishes you? What makes you the best candidate for Westwood City Council?
You know, professionally, my background is in construction, development, property management. I do some property management now, then kind of a niche subject or a niche area. But my history of that and my kind of knowledge of those areas gives me an insight into some of the issues that we face with new builds and our aging tree canopy that gives me the ability to both say, when a builder says something or a developer says something, say, "This seems true," or, "Hey, that's BS." I know BS when I see it on the development side because I've been on both sides of it. And I think that's what I would bring to the table for Westwood.
And the last person to go, Jeff Harris. What distinguishes you? What sets you apart as you seek, in your case, reelection?
Question makes us all have to confront our Midwest humbleness. One of the things that the council has to do is think about really, really complicated questions or problems. And by complicated, I mean, they have years, if not decades, of history. We have to think about various points of view. We have to sometimes have in front of us five surveys. We have to consider the city code, state law. We have to consider precedent. We have to consider the needs and the budget and the dollars. There's a lot to be on the table when we have these questions. Couple years after I started, or maybe a couple months after I started on council, I realized, oh, I have to think about how I'm going to think about this question or this problem. And so I think what makes me stand out is what I have learned in my ability to do just that, so that I, as an individual council member and council in general, is making good decisions.
And just to be clear, the three of you will win, so maybe saying, you know, what makes you the best candidate, maybe a little bit of a misnomer, because what makes you the third best candidate? What makes you the second best candidate? But give them a round of applause for participating in tonight's forum. So again, just to be clear, this is an open, so there's three open seats, so the top three vote-getters on November 4th will win. Thank you so much for participating. Thanks so much for the crowd who's here. Thanks so much for those of you who are watching. This is the first of 12 nights of forums we're doing this fall, so we really do appreciate it. And this video will remain on our Facebook page through November 4th. Thank you very much.